I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're short one temporarily. Apparently he walks slower than I remember. All right, so finished off. Do we have an approval for the agenda? A motion to approve the agenda, I should say.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 So then we jump directly into discussion items. Right off the bat is number A, it's policy and procedure thirty-one twelve emotional or social emotional climate. Has everybody had a chance to to read through it? Here comes Jason. We'll just hold up a second. Jason, we're jumped right in. Policy procedure thirty-one twelve, social emotional climate. Has everybody had a chance to read through it?
Yes.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was not a mandatory, this was an advisory policy, correct?
Yeah.
Encouraged.
Encouraged. So it's not essential.
Okay. Is there anything anybody wants to say?
So when we looked at this on August twenty-fourth, we asked, I asked, and I don't know if anyone else was in agreement, that we, when we were presenting policies and there's blanks that need to be filled in, that they should come back filled in. So that way we see the complete policy. So we have a name of district, the blank name of district, the blank name of district. And I think in the second reading, but on the third reading, it shouldn't be the final form. It should be.
We should see it final before we vote on it, I agree.
And editing as we move along, so it's not the very end.
I don't think this is a first or a second reading.
It was just for discussion.
Discussion.
Okay. But I, but we did discuss it on the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Filling in the, but you're, you were right.
Yeah. I don't have an issue so much with the policy. I do, I mean, maybe a little bit, but I really have some issues with the procedure. And this is part, and I think we talked about it, or I talked about it last meeting. You know, we're taking some WASDA policy, you know, their their boilerplate policies and procedures and then trying to implement them. I, and I don't think a lot, a lot, maybe not a lot, but some of what we get from WASDA actually matches our, you know, our district, or I, I think that's probably the best way to say it. And there's a few definitions I would. You know, I guess where I'm going with this, I think we should just table this. If it's not required, I think we table it for a later time.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I would add that if it's not required, we have a ton of things that are that we should be looking at long before this, so. Unless there's somebody that thinks we need to hit it hard now, I say, I agree with Jason. We just table it and when we get caught up on other things, we can look at it again.
I agree.
Does that sound like a plan, everybody? All right, that's where we'll go with that one then. And then is our minimum fund balance policy, which yet again, I didn't have as near as much time as I thought I was going to. You do? Oh, thank you.
And so I looked at the surrounding districts to see what they do and what their policies are. And similar size, I looked at, you know, a couple might be a little bit smaller, some that are larger. And the average goes anywhere from three percent to ten percent. And but one of the most common thresholds was a minimum of four percent with a range of three to five percent, and it specifies that. So a minimum of four, but a range of three to five. And from a financial, financial perspective, I would highly support that. Because then it does give you a little bit of flexibility from year to year where you're not constantly making policy changes or really getting down to the nitty gritty. Unless it goes below the four percent, you just have to have a plan to keep it within that range. And I think for our district, that could work really well. I am brand new though, so I would like time to review our financials, make sure that that does give us the contingency funds that we would need. But if you were, you know, really adamant about getting something in place now, I would be comfortable with that language. And as an example, Grandview has a minimum of four, the, the language I just said, so Grandview and Keweenaw Benton, so Ben City, they both have that same language, the minimum of four percent, three to five. Kennewick has a minimum of three percent, but the range from three to five. Zilla is ten percent, Finley is five percent, and Columbia is eight percent with four percent designated and four percent unrestricted. Actually, kind of, I like some of their language, but we wouldn't want to look into that further. So yeah, that's, and then the last thing I would like to say, and that's on your unrestricted part of your fund balance. So we have the full fund balance, but that includes like grant funding and things that are already committed. So we, if, if I have a saying, then it would be for the unrestricted portion of our fund balance. So that we don't get into, you know, get our hands tied with the grant funding.
And then the minimum maximum works in the part I wanted where we could, you know, you have, you have a dropped dead amount, you can't go below, but there's also that little wiggle room where you try to keep it a little higher. And just like this year, we were, you know, four hundred thousand over-ish. That would have been the, you know, one percent of wiggle room that's figured into this.
So when you're saying. If we went, if you're saying, I'm just trying to, this, the language four percent with the minimum of four percent, but a range of three to five.
And so if it's going to drop below the four, you need a plan in place to recoup it right away. So you wouldn't like pass the budget without a resolution of like what you're going to do to make sure it gets back up to your four percent. And at three percent, if you drop below that, that's like you're, you gotta make decisions right away because we can't pass the budget with it below three percent. That was my interpretation. So I, I can, I can provide some sample language. And it just depends on timeline if we want to make a decision right away or before I really have a chance to review the budget in depth. We do have historical data. And but if we do a range, I would be a little bit more comfortable fishing it faster.
Yeah, I would encourage the board to think about potential implications. And so when you do set a basement like that, it does have bargaining implications, right? That at the bargaining table, every unit knows that we can't drop below. And so if, if that's the basement, we can fight, fight, fight until we get to that point, right? So it does have, it does have some implications. We should, you know, that being said, we're going to strive to make sure that we compensate fairly and that we we have an attractive package that we offer employees so we can recruit the best. But it does have some of those implications built into it. When we decide on a number, that's really the ongoing, we're setting, you know, limits as far as we're not going to go below this. And if we do, we're declaring it an emergency and planning similar to kind of what we did this year.
With that said, Jason, do you have a number that pops into your mind?
Well, I think even I've always looked at it as a five percent. I never really kind of thought that there's different ways to finagle that. I do kind of like this minimum of four with the range of three to five. Um, I could go up and down on that, on that range. I, I don't know if I'd like to see a three percent.
Yeah.
Um, I think that would be a little scary. So I've probably changed the range, you know, from four to five or four to six or whatever that that may be. To give us a little bit more of an emergency fund.
Okay, Peggy?
I do like the, the having that, having a minimum and then having that percentage range. I'm, I mean, I can, I understand the four percent and then that three to five, but I'm kind of on that. A kind of agreeing, maybe having that just a tad bit higher. I'm feeling a little more comfortable with the five percent minimum. And then having that go four to six, but I could, I could be persuaded probably to go with that three to five, but I, I'd feel more comfortable if the five percent was the minimum.
Jeannie?
Same thing. I, I would go along with the four percent, but I kind of like the little bit higher range.
Alyssa?
I think this is great information. I appreciate you calling the schools and getting that. And I, I agree with the range that everybody has stated here. The four to, a four to, a four to six at landing on five percent.
Okay, so naturally, I'm the, the hoarder here. I would lobby probably for like a five to seven with a six percent average. I wanted about seven and a half anyway. But at this point, I'm the odd man out. So four to six with a five percent average, sounds reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess that's where we're headed then. If you want to put some wording together and, and we'll, I mean, we've been talking about it for weeks at this point, a couple more are going to kill us, so. Thank you.
This would impact the budget for the next cycle. So if the board decides to reevaluate it between now and then, you could always update the policy before we pass the budget resolution, is my understanding. So as we get deeper into the numbers, you know, if we decide with the construction that we need a larger contingency fund for next year, we can always make some adjustments to increase that backup.
Okay. Yeah, and as long as it's unrestricted, the other stuff is, is what it is. It doesn't.
It was a range of with a minimum of
Five. Yes, ma'am. That should work well. Get that in place and it'll definitely help with some of our decisions in the future.
Now, will this move then, will this policy then move to first reading or next reading?
Yes.
Along with the wordings.
Okay.
And the numbers and everything.
Okay.
Catch up with what we were just talking about, yeah.
Okay.
I can.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is instructional policy. Uh, this is some Jason and I have talked about. What we're looking at is, is moving forward, the critical race theory stuff, a lot of the, the history, it's all going to have to be done. Factual. You want to say anything about it?
No, I think, you know, I think in the, where we are today and some of the things that have been, I guess, out in the open, I think this is an appropriate policy to implement for our district so that, you know, we are, you know, teaching truth. That's, that's my feeling towards that. I think there's a few districts in our area. This, I think the one in our board packet, Kennewick School District approved here last month. And I think it's worth, I think it's worth us supporting and worth us evaluating, not maybe this wording, we can make it our own, but I think it's appropriate that we actually entertain this and look and make a serious effort to, I guess, evaluate and move forward.
Is there anybody opposed or have questions or comments?
I don't have a problem with any of, Matt and I were visiting the other day, and I want children to learn factual history. I told Matt that I started watching the US and the Holocaust. It's, it's really sad and hard to watch, but we can't go back and change anything. Nobody can. We didn't treat the Indians well. Yes, we had slaves throughout history. There's been different groups that, that have, have not had an easy way because of other people. But we can't change that. But I do want children to understand that. I don't want them to feel bad because they can't change the past. They can be better people now, you know, and then hopefully that's all how we're all raising our children. You know, that everybody's equal and to treat everyone that way. So, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Peggy?
I, I agree. I mean, it's it can be a touchy subject, but I think it's something that, that we need to address and I don't have a problem with addressing it. It needs to be done. As long as it's done the right way, we just need to make sure that we're teaching it correctly.
Fair enough. Alyssa?
I have some concern regarding the integrity of the document. So at the bottom, it says legal reference, and it just as a former, the editor in music, first of all, there's no footnotes that reference the legal references. So that's a formatting issue. But also these legal references, so the Constitution, the First Amendment and the Fifteenth Amendment and then Article Nine, Section Four of the Washington State Constitution are listed as legal references, but nothing in here refers to any of these documents. There's nothing that addresses free speech. There's nothing that addresses African Americans having men, African American men getting the right to vote in the Fifteenth Amendment. And there's nothing about the requirements of a state education in Article Nine. So whatever gets put out needs to be fact checked. It needs to be right. My other question is, I, I don't know what secretarian control is. Maybe someone knows more than I do, tell me. My other question is, what would it limit teachers to do? It says it has to be with neutrality. So can the statement be like Rosa Parks had to sit in the back of the bus because she was African American? Is that neutral or is it not neutral? Because it is an adjective. She was African American. So that's, I mean, that's my, and then we do other data reporting. My understanding, I talked to a building administrator that said at the end of the year, each building has to give data to OPSI and it's sorted by sex and by rate. So how does that impact the district if this policy is placed?
This has to do with just curriculum, not, not nothing to do with reporting or anything like that. You know, what you said was a fact, you know, that, that's what happened. It's when you try to sugarcoat it or change history to match a an idea or a narrative. Yeah, thank you. But I think this policy would, would cover.
I think if the, a policy that the board wants to go forward with, it just needs to be worked so that, I mean, to me, neutrality means no adjective. So I think, and then if it's going to reference something, it should be done appropriately with footnotes and it should be accurate.
Okay, well, there's our answer then. We will get started working on it. Oh, I didn't, yeah, sorry, I hadn't looked up.
Quick question from my perspective. Is this something that we can include teachers on in the discussion? As we move forward with this, I, there is apprehension from teachers in regards to this in terms of what, how this is going to impact their teaching, impact their ability to have conversations. Things might not be in the curriculum, but if a conversation comes up and a teacher has to make a movement on the fly left or right to the interest level of a student in the, in the moment, and in the moment, teaching changes. There's some fear there that they're going to be hamstrung and then be, hey, if I'm in my effort to try and stew this conversation, what's going to happen to me if I can't bring it back as quickly as I want to bring it back? Or, and I think that's a valid concern for our teachers if there's policy in place that then puts them in a negative light. That's number one. And then back to OSPR reporting. OSPR reporting is one thing, but for example, I'm in a situation, so myself, this is my personal situation. I had a student in my, in my office, we were talking about school, student wanted to drop out. I pull up some data from, from a state site about the level of education impacting the amount of money that you can make. That is directly related to race. That is directly related to gender. That is directly related to protected class and disaggregated based on those things. By sharing the information as it's presented in the data table, is that, and this is now clarification for me, is that crossing the line?
It's factual.
Or is that not?
Well, again, it, I think it goes back to being factually based, right? You know, hi- history is not pretty, you know, but let's teach it accurately. If you're talking to a student about whether he's dropping out and you're looking at tables and spreadsheets, you know, that's, that's not curriculum. The way I see it, I could be wrong. It's
It wasn't curriculum in my case.
Yeah.
Because I'm using that to try and keep a kid.
So that, and that's really what the idea behind this is, is just curriculum. What happens in the classroom?
So maybe a definition section, curriculum and what's curriculum? I mean, I would, I would define out, you know, every term.
Yeah.
No, I just, we deal with so many hot topics, and, you know, all of us together are dealing with so many hot topics. This is kind of a, this is a major one in our country right now.
That's why we're addressing.
Well, that's my point is I, I, I hope that this is a bigger discussion than just us right now.
Whether the voices have been hostile or not, since day one, I've always said more voices are better than fewer. So I see no reason they can't, you know. Can't, can't be part of the discussion.
Would basically be our history teachers and elementary, they teach some history, don't they? And middle school.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, but what you did, Brian, I don't have a problem with. You're trying to help the child. You're not saying, you know.
And the only reason I brought that up was, you know, sometimes when you begin a deeper reading of those paragraphs in there, sometimes it gets a little gray. When we're talking about, you know, racial injustice really, and, and what is present in, in the country even right now. It is factual and there is factual information to back that up. Then there's the step from having the discussion to what is curriculum. And I, I just want to be careful there.
I, I think I would also add to that, that discussions about things like economics and things like that don't just happen in history class. So this, I mean, it, sometimes it's just the events of the day or something that's happening in the world that any teacher could have a discussion about things that might be happening, you know, issues. And so it's not just, it's not just history teachers. And I think that you, you don't probably get into a lot, there isn't going to probably be a lot of these controversial conversations when you're talking about elementary kids or you start getting into upper middle school and definitely high school. So I, I think what Brian's saying is right, you know, we a policy, like it's, what exactly is the policy saying? Because to me, when I read it, I would have a hard time using this as a guide because the tables he pulled up may be perfectly accurate and from a great source, but maybe they weren't. I don't know. I assume they were because he's probably using clearinghouse data or something like that. But just Google something, you can get all sorts of information. So what is the fact? And what isn't? And what determines that would be and my question.
Well, a lot of times you can have, you can have both the good and the bad or fact. You know, you look at Winston Churchill, everybody reveres him unless you're an Indian.
You have to talk about good and bad, or you have to talk about the good and the bad things that have happened because it's, it's our job to help kids learn from history and not just this kind of history, but the history of their lives and decisions people have made, current history, past history. So it, it seems more like a political statement than a policy to me. So I think it, like Alyssa said, it needs more work if we're going to have something like that.
While we've been sitting here, I remember, so this is nineteen ninety-six, Crosser High School history class. There was a girl in our history class and she said this as a question out loud, black people can vote, question mark? And so that's led to a larger discussion amongst students and with the teachers. And so I would, and I think it was a productive discussion. She learned a lot of information that day. And I think other people in my class, we learned that a lot of people don't know history. I would hope that those conversations would be allowed to continue because I think that was a real, you know, a real life education experience. It was, I mean, memorable.
Yeah, I want those kinds of discussions.
I'm kind of confused on, Kevin, go ahead.
I think, and I've always believed this, that as a teacher, you should be neutral, but we also should be promoting the fact and, and teaching students to be informed citizens and be able to research topics to make a decision. And I feel like if, if we shut down one side through this, similar to the conversation that you were referencing. I think that they should, students should have the ability to express the, their opinions and their voices and have that discussion. And when we, when we get into troubles, when we decide that only one view is going to be presented.
Well, I completely agree. That's essentially, that's why we're saying it has to be factual, not opinion based.
I mean, the first paragraph says it's got to be free from political or personal biases. Right? So I'm not, I don't think anybody here would disagree that both sides, you gotta have both sides to make an informed decision and go figure it out on your own. I don't read the same thing that you guys are reading into this, but but I still, I mean, it's, it'll be a work in progress and I think we should move forward.
I have a question. You had asked about like teachers, I'm having teacher input. And so if we were to put this back on the agenda for the next study session next month and invite intentionally the teachers who want to participate in the conversation, would that be the appropriate next step? I mean, I know they were welcome to come today, but if we actually say this is on the agenda, hey, hey, if you have, you know, something to say, I mean, I don't
Normally in study session, there's not, there's not a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So that's probably why, I mean, not necessarily, but maybe why.
Well, part of the reason
The same discussions in this room during study sessions, talking about discipline, talking about all kinds of stuff for teachers and everybody came in and, and contributed. So it's not that, you know, it's not that they're prevented from coming and speaking. I mean, we were answering questions and, and working with comments today. So it's, I don't, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but they did have an opportunity to come here and, and speak.
Can I actually make a recommendation? Sure. Director Riley talked about finessing the policy and adding more to it. Perhaps definitions, things like that. And so I think it's incomplete. And so if you were going to invite discussion, it probably lead to more conflict. And so completing it first and then inviting feedback from stakeholders. So in, instead of just, you know, having all this, you know, feedback and, you know, people disagreeing about stances. And so to complete the product first and then have, bring it back and have more discussion about it. Um, I think, I think might be productive. Um, so we can, you know, like, I think policy is best when there, it, there's a high amount of clarity involved with it. So it's crystal clear on what it's saying and indicating because really we're talking about a government structure within the district. So, um, you know, to provide that clarity. And then, you know, and let people read and review the complete policy and invite feedback.
Yeah, well, we'll work on it then. And when it's getting much closer, we will make
But with that, with, you know, if that's the direction, then I do need some time and effort with. Or, you know, I do need some in it. Like some assistance from board members. As we've done before with policies, right? Um, just like the drug testing policy. The, the meal policy that we did, the nepotism policy. I mean, that was all a product of board members assisting in the process, working with our legal counsel as well. So thoughts, ideas?
Okay.
Would this, would this be like working with the history department? Getting feedback from the history department then? Is that what you're asking?
No, I, I'm just saying to have a complete product first. And so the footnotes, the definitions, answering any questions. So And so the footnotes, the definitions, um, answering any questions. So. Usually it's, you know, there's discussion among board members about certain things before we, you know, invite.
Okay.
Others to join the conversation. So is the board in agreement about what this says? And so to. To, you know, wordsmith or rework it in the way that we, you know, the board wants it to look like. Um, and then invite, you know, feedback about people, what, you know, what do you have concerns with? In this policy or what, you know, what do you like about it? What do you love? What do you like? You know, what can you live with?
Okay.
What can you live without? Right? So.
Okay, sounds like a plan, huh?
I was just gonna say, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go through standards with you guys. Um, if you're interested in any of that, I only bring that up because. Uh, like Deanna talked about, this is bigger than just the history. When we're talking about our, our um different subjects. You try to get those higher overthinking skills and oftentimes that is, they use the words assess or evaluate and we're asking students to make judgments. Um, you know, based on those things to actually, and it's written within the standards. And so um, I I don't want to. I don't want to be ham- to hamstring anybody to be unable to teach a standard. Because we're trying to remove those, those, that language. So it might be interesting and an interesting study for us to sit down together and go through some of those to see. You know, what in, what impacts would would be there, would be present. Even just according to standard.
I would like to help work on this now. I would volunteer.
All right, so we will look into that, which then takes us to. D, which is the Patterson proposal. And again, I don't believe we're adopting or accepting anything tonight, but it's here for discussion. Uh, you guys have all seen what the offer was, correct? And the wording that goes with it. Uh, are there anything you wanna say, Matt, up front?
Um, no, just that, you know, we've. We had that joint board meeting, uh, we could agree upon the fact that uh Art Fiker needed some work. And so that was a kind of a common theme or a common thread. There are other projects that could take place. Um, but it has to be, that money has to be used on this high school campus. Um, so, yeah, we're, you know, we're looking to resolve this. It's taken. Taken place, you know, this discussion and negotiation over a number of different years started before I was here. Um, well, was, you know, Ray and went through Deanna and Craig and then me and. Um, on Patterson's side, they've had different superintendents from John to Monica to Joe now and different board members as well. And so um, we're looking to try and to get to an agreement and something that we can. Spend that, you know, like together agree upon that the money needs to be spent. So. I know that many of you have expressed that uh the landscaping at Art Fiker needs some, needs some work. Um, part of this is that we would go out to bid um on a project like that and then work with Patterson on. On the uh funding that. And then if there's any district match on our end. Uh, to to pay for that as well. So um, that would definitely, I mean, would embedded within that conversation is. Kind of a broader picture of this would be the first step in what I would call a phased approach to dealing with. Our favorite football stadium and how we update it. So that's all I have to to talk about that. Ultimately, it's the board's decision to accept or reject. Um, or if there's questionable language, we can go back to the table. Uh, with Patterson about it.
Okay, um, any comments?
So Matt, what you were just talking about, is that what you're referring to in section three point one? Patterson will pay the a proser. Patterson will pay the Patterson contribution to Proser after the commencement date for the high school projects construction. And that the commencement date will be forty five days prior to the to the commencement date. So. We need to go first and bid the stadium project, I think. And then the money would be paid, is that correct?
Yeah, they were, I think part of their strategy was to pay it out of PIL.
Right.
Uh, which is payment in lieu of taxes. And so the way the districts access PIL funds is actually to go into debt. And so we would need to finance it in some fashion. And then they would help us pay off that debt with with that money. Or they had two options. I think it was four hundred and fifty upfront or or four, yeah, four hundred and fifty upfront or payments of fifty. To reach five hundred or pay, no, payments of a hundred rather, to reach five hundred thousand, sorry.
No. Ten of fifty.
Ten of fifty.
Um, and actually, go ahead, sorry, I'll bring mine up later.
There's blueprints for the stadium drawn up, is that right?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah, that it's been something we have discussed. Um, we've never taken that step with the architects because. It, you know, within that discussion, it's how are you gonna finance it?
Right.
Um, they wanna get paid. Something as simple as landscaping, um. If we had some landscapers within our community, or I know that there's even some landscaping firms in the Tri-Cities area. That might be something easier to do. Um, and we're talking about, you know, step one would be ripping out the shrubs. And then step two would be thinking about what we either wanted to plant there, whether it was grass or whether we wanted to do rock or something with that.
I don't know that we've been really well with landscapers lately. Um, I I would, when I talk about improving landscape, I'm talking about. Pulling the weeds that are as tall as me. I'm not talking about, you know. Central Park. I I would like to see the money go to replace the track. I have no idea if this would cover that cost, but I, in my. Opinion, that is the highest need of the stadium. And ADA bathrooms, which is a price cost.
Yeah, a lot.
I would ask, um, kind of, you know, I don't, I I agree with what Elisa said. And we have no idea what we're gonna do, how much it's gonna cost. You know, what phases can we, you know, is it gonna, is it a five-year phase, you know, or is it a ten-year phase? Um, what would an architect do to draw it up? What would that cost?
Yeah, so, so they spitballed it and the the complete project was around five and a half million.
No, I mean, just to draw it up.
To draw it up. Uh, I could talk with them and and uh at champagne or steed bra. And see what it might look like.
Like, I think if we do it, a tiered approach, and I I agree landscaping is easy, right? But if we don't have a structure in place to actually complete all these projects, they're never gonna get done.
Yeah.
Um, so if if it costs whatever it costs to have an architect draw up the whole program. But break it out into a five-year phase, the biggest phase would probably be the bathrooms and remodeling, you know, the the building part would be my guess. Next to the, you know, the field if we chose to go turf or not. But if, but if we have like a a track phase, a field phase, ADA accessible phase from the top to the bottom. And then the building face, at least we could, you know, pigeonhole some of these dollars, you know, whether it's. Landscaping and ADA accessible, whether it's new track, you know, stuff like that. Otherwise, I think we're just kinda. We're, we're.
Yeah.
We're walking.
Flailing.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Um. Didn't the track doctor come last year? Brian?
Track doctor, um, I've contacted multiple times in my time here. Got talked to him three different times. He was supposed to come last year, ended up not coming. But I, if we're serious about a project. Getting that info, I can get it.
That's for just the track.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with Jason. We need to look at the whole scope. And and then divide it into the phases, but get an idea of what the total. What we totally want and then divide it into the phases. Otherwise, we're never, we've got it. Otherwise, we're never going to get started. We've gotta have an idea what we want when we're finished and then start chipping away at it. Otherwise, we're not gonna get, because we know we need to have a bathrooms and a concession stand. Over by the the baseball fields. We know we need to take care of the track. And the football field, we know we need to do the ADA. And hand, you know, handrail down the step. I've already had people ask me, why don't we have a handrail down our steps? I mean, there's so many things we need to get done, but we can't get anything done if we don't have a plan.
CSG can actually do like, like a big estimate of the overall project.
Yeah.
So there.
And then we can look at the pool of money and we can start chipping away and deciding what's the most important and let's get going.
Yeah, so um, so there's two different pieces here, like we could, we could go out and design it.
Right.
Right? And so they, architects West and they, you know, it'll come at a fee. Um, they could design all that. So what that entails is similar to. What they did with our design bid build projects where they come out and they have a general idea, it may even involve meetings with the board. About their vision for it. Um, they do specification interviews where they had a firm, Teeter Crocker. They came out and they said, what, you know, what are the uses? What would you like here? What would you need? Um, of course, they would look at the existing facility and ways that they could expand our ideas. And come up with a plan. That'd be expensive. It it's expensive. And then knowing that. If we get five, five or six years out, there potentially could be new technologies. And something better out there that we go back to the drawing board and say, hey, you know, there's a different kind of field turf. The caution with re-tracking it is that if we do it, so we decide at some point in time to do filter. Right? That's gonna, there probably will need to be some heavy machinery uh driving across that track, which would wreck and nullify any of the. Um, to spitball the price, CSG can come up with a pretty detailed list of, you know. What, what different components there are and prices for that. Uh, part of the. Part of the initial discussion was just the scope when we're talking about it. And and that really would, like I was saying, architects was coming out and talking with the board. They're gonna ask questions about the lights and the lighting. Um, they're gonna ask questions about the the scoreboard. Is that sufficient or do you want something new? Field turf, um, the track, it's, you know, do we wanna improve the facilities? Or is it just kind of a renovation that we keep things, you know, uh, the way that they are? So um, yeah, either, you know, do, does a board wanna have it designed, designed and spelled out as far, you know, go through that process and have. Blueprints and everything else and to pay for that? Or do we just want, here's how much approximately it will cost? And even that's kind of subject to change because of the economy, inflation, everything going on right now, right? War in Ukraine. Um, everything. So, you know, or kind of a ballpark figure about this is how much that would take.
Gotta start with a ballpark or some, we've gotta have something. We can't just keep sitting here saying, gosh, we need to do something. We have to, we have to say. Let's go. Right?
The the benefit of a design is that, is, is all of you know. That when they start to design the high school, they did really cool three D renderings. And that actually added to some excitement within the community. If you can see it, then you can believe it. And so that added to, you know, kind of the hype behind it. Um, so that would be one benefit. Like I said, it comes at a cost. Uh, the ballpark it, uh, we could start to say, all right, let's earmark money. Let's plan for this and make it a reality. So.
Can we do both?
Uh, sure, we can.
You could spitball like landscaping and get the dead bushes out of there, the weeds that are tall as Elisa.
Yeah.
And then kind of clean that up a little bit, but then the whole project needs to be done. I mean, the whole project needs to be designed and.
Yeah.
Need to be able to.
If.
Work on it all the time.
The, the bushes, I think we can, I mean, we can bid that ASAP. If that's something that the board wants to see, like, let's get those. Bid it, let's get that handled, right? Cause dirt on that hill looks better than bushes as tall as Elisa. Right? Um, so, yeah, so so that's another option too, to take care of some of it or to start working on it immediately. But it, all, all these are, CSG is a inexpensive move. And so we're talking really about resource, resource allocation. Do we wanna spend money upfront and have a really developed plan? Do we wanna kind of go with the cheap route and then wrap our minds around what we want it to look like and how we want it to phase it if we do phase it?
What is the CSG?
Construction Services Group.
Thank you.
So there, they are uh construction site managers that uh work through. I believe it's EST one thirteen. Um, so they work with districts on. Yep, when they have, they have the skill set.
I like a full blown project scope for work. Put on out, but.
Yeah. Well, I think long term, we have to have something like that. Uh, my two things I wanted to throw in actually. Were way backed up discussing the the contract itself. Uh, the one thing, one of two things that bugged me was the two point nine. Uh, and I've said a thousand times, I have zero interest whatsoever and even trying to consolidate Patterson. But to give away anything we have for future to accept a deal that's fifty percent of. You know, what? That seems incredibly foolish. So I think there needs to be some wording in there about. Uh, you know, at the end of this deal, they're free and clear on this, but in the future, you know, it is what it is. Uh. And then the other thing I wanted to throw out, and this is something for everybody else to think about. The, the deal as as put forth here is four hundred and fifty thousand for one lump sum payment. Or ten of fifty. Now, fifty thousand dollars in this day and age with the price of diesel is like gonna fill up the excavator. And then we're done for the year. I don't see where fifty, ten times, I I think it could be like four fifty or two payments of two fifty. Cause you're not gonna get nothing done for fifty grand.
You're offering four fifty in a lump sum, why would we go back with?
Well, it's their choice, isn't it? The way I read it.
You can either do four fifty or the ten payments of fifty.
Patterson will have the option to pay the Patterson contribution in one of two ways. They choose how we get it.
I would just say it's A or nothing.
Well, I mean, we could do that or we could say, change B. My point is, is, is. Or or B could be whatever we want it to be. I'm just pointing out that at fifty thousand a year for ten years. Well, yeah, I mean, we're, like I say, you know, you you fill up an excavator with diesel and you blew fifty grand. It's, it's not, it's not gonna be enough of anything to. To make it dent. I mean, it's, and the fact that we would have to. And and I don't have a problem with bidding it out first and and, you know, being reimbursed. That's, I get it. I I understand that's how it works. But if you're gonna bid out fifty thousand dollars worth of work, I mean, that's like, I. Handrails and that's it for one year. This kicks the can so far down the road of fifty thousand at a time.
Unless it makes a payment, I guess, going into debt.
Well, you know, and it could be that too, if that's the way you guys, I mean, I, I'm just saying, the way, the way it reads, I I'm.
What about the agreement?
I don't know.
For Patterson or for Proster?
Uh, for Patterson.
So those were my two concerns of what I read here. Uh, I do agree however with everybody here. Uh, I think we need to look at this as a, as a two, two-pronged approach. We need an overall goal as to what we want it to be when we're done in five years, eight years, whatever the plan is. And I think we also need to have a few numbers of, you know, uh, half a million at a time or. You know, what's, I already know what the turf's gonna cost, but, you know, different, different costs. So if we have this much. You know, if we have a pot with this many dollars and we're like, okay, we can knock this off our list, let's do it. Uh, we need to to have that information up front of us.
You have an idea what turf might cost?
Probably two mil.
Two mil.
Hope we have spent, I think, three or four and they just put turf in.
Was that just for the turf? It's not that much?
That's a good question, whether it was just for the turf or for everything. Hope we am.
Oh, okay.
I might have been average.
I'm opening my mouth when I shouldn't. I apologize.
No, feel free.
One of the things you have to consider, consider if you're going to move to remove the the grass and put it in turf. Is you may have to do work on the dry wells that are down there because the dry wells are there to protect. Them from overflowing into the uh stadium. I was on the board back when they did the last time on the track.
Okay.
And we had to really look at the dry wells and make sure they were. And do some work on them to make sure that they would manage in case of an emergency. Like the irrigation, letting go and going through the cemetery and the water rolling down into the. Through the parking lot and into the stadium.
Yeah, any groundwork, I'm sure there would have to be.
And those, it isn't just. The astroturf, you, there, when you're looking at projects like you're talking about, it can be. Bigger, even though you don't want to make them any bigger.
I would think that the canals running through the cemetery, the water would be the least of our worries at that point.
Well, it is.
No, I know, uh, and another, and another thing you have to think about is if, if we go to turf and I understand it's a big cost upfront. Uh, generally speaking, it has like a fifteen to twenty year lifespan. Well, I, I'm sort of old school, I like grass, but, um, it generally pays for itself in about ten years is, is. Sort of what they say the average is, so, but that's not, has nothing to do with this agreement. We're kind of getting off in the.
In the week.
Off in the weeds, yeah, so to speak.
Yeah, and I, I am more in favor of the lump sum payment because then you can throw it at something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I, again, I don't necessarily care if it's payments, but they can't be.
Little, little.
It's, it's gotta be substantial, it's gotta be an amount you can do something with and not. And especially if you have to, you know, to spend it first. Uh. I mean, I, I'm sure there's projects that are that amount of money, but man, everything's expensive when you're doing. I mean, look at what Witstrand cost, the price doubled in eighteen months or whatever it was.
But you're worth it, Kevin.
Absolutely. So where are you guys at on that? Do you wanna move forward as it sits?
I don't, I could take out two point nine or rewrite it, you know, something that doesn't limit us forever.
Well, and, and I understand, you know, as part of this agreement, that when, when we're square on this agreement, yeah, I got it. But moving forward, there may be something in ten years, fifteen years, and I'm not gonna hamstring a board ten years from now.
Right.
To have to make a decision.
Right.
Because we wanted to get this off our plate. That just does not seem.
And I would, I would just take out B and just leave it at one lump sum.
But Andy, what you were trying to say was that write something in there that in the future we won't accept. Part of what the figure is that's actually old, is that what?
Well, no, 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 it, it, okay, so two point nine. It says the, the, the Prosser district understa- or Prosser understands and agrees that it shall not seek to consolidate Patterson absent. The written consent of Patterson.
Yeah.
So, and again, I have no interest in that, but if, if there was some kind of. Huge disagreement between the districts and then there was a bunch of money owed. And we couldn't get past whatever. I mean, that's why Witstrand is Witstrand Consolidated District in some point in time in the history. Um, once this deal's done, I, I think that wording needs to be there for future boards. I mean, I, I can't.
Prossers consolidated.
Prosser with Patterson, that was not what.
Thought it was Witstrand.
Wasn't ever a separate school district.
Oh, wasn't? I thought it was Witstrand was a, uh, anyway. Anyway, my, my point is, is that wording's over there. Oh, we think we want more.
No, right.
Uh, or anything like that, you know? And, and I do think we need to offer him some payments. Again, it does. You know, it's like the, the, the bookie and the gambler guy, you know, he go, you'll break their knees and they can't work, you're never gonna get your money. I have zero interest in, in, you know, beating them down, demanding one big payment. But it can necessarily be, or, or, or if they're gonna do something like that, we could put interest on it. You know, to, to give incentive to pay quicker, I guess. I don't know, but I, I can't see how fifty thousand at a payment. Does a lot for us, so.
So you're saying maybe, I'll see if they'd rather pay two payments of two hundred.
That's where I would go.
We would get more money too.
I would, I would say myself, I would say two payments of two fifty or the four fifty amount would be what I would put on here. And then I would have something written under two point nine to. Um, you know, in the future.
Or just have them eliminate two point nine.
I guess, yeah, you know, we could put something in there that as soon as this deal's settled, we're square and everything's back to whatever it was before we had this deal.
Or just eliminate that altogether from this.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Have we had our attorney look at it?
Uh, Sean Mumford, no, not yet.
I, I would have our attorney look at it.
Yeah.
Most attorneys write agreements favorable for their clients.
I would eliminate two point nine from this document. And I would say under B, three point one B, I would change that. Uh, I'd leave the four hundred and fifty lump sum or. Change to be to or to equal payments of two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, uh, with the first payment due.
Jenny, Alisa?
That was three payments, though. You said sixty days a year and the next year pay. That would be three payments.
No, I said, no, I said two.
Okay.
Two payments.
How do you want, how do you want that made?
So two at two hundred and fifty, I think.
To at the time period.
Oh, it was.
First payment due.
Whenever they make the first one.
Second one following year.
Calendar year, uh.
So does payment due and payable in sixty days to the commencement date for the high school construction project?
I guess you'd have to bid it twice then, if you read it that way, huh?
If you're gonna make two payments, you gotta have two different.
Yep, you're right. So, and then that's, that's a reasonable on their part. That ensures the money's being spent on the stadium and or capital projects.
Yes, be with the high school.
Or the high school, yeah, sorry, that's.
This would be my suggestion. Let's ask the attorney how to word it.
Okay. That's way easier.
We're gonna pay them a lot of money to look at it. Let's, let's get all their ideas.
Oh, alright. Oh, the strategic planning revise, was that, are we good on Patterson then for now? Bring it back up?
Yep.
Alright. So we're on to the strategic planning revise. You guys read through a couple of these? Were there thoughts or comments?
Other than the dollar figure.
Yeah, well.
My own thought is if we go with one of these plans to go with the cheaper one, um, to save the school district money. And it's been brought up a few times that we could possibly get together and work on this as a group.
But the, the difference in price, uh, there was also quite a lot of work difference too. The more expensive one was like it was really in depth and surveys of the public and I mean, there was a lot, well, both had some. But it was a big deal, so, you know, even though it's more money, it may be a better value. I don't necessarily see it that way, but. Was there any thoughts as to which way we'd like to go with it? Gina, you had said probably the, the first one?
And again, we don't have to decide on it tonight, right?
No, 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 we're just kind of deciding which way to go and who to talk to. In fact, I believe we'd have to okay a contract, correct?
Yeah.
Before we did anything.
Um, and that can happen in, in kind of a short order. A, one of the considerations is the timeframe. And so, uh, the recommendation from Wazda, you know, the. The name that Wazda gave us for that consultant, there, there are some just distinctions. Um, she's been a board member before and, um, has done training and she's produced. Multiple strategic plans for, uh, districts. Um, she can produce one and, and the process is, is different. I tried to kind of indicate that, but, um, it's cheaper and a faster process. The C E, um, like Andy, you were talking about, there are surveys involved with it. Um, some of it's perceptual data. And so, of course, the, the issue with perceptual data is that. Um, say for instance, when, if you had really great, really great scores. And the perception was that you weren't running a good program or vice versa. That, um, you had, you know, your program was struggling. And then you had perceptual data that said it was top notch. And so perceptual data can help, uh, develop a picture, a whole picture of what's going on. Um, but I think that, the, you know, I, I would encourage the board to consider the. The Wazda consultant, um, just because of the timeframe, uh, school improvement plans are coming due to. And so there's actually, um, we'll need to improve or approve school improvement plans before. Uh, the end of the year. And so that's another, another piece too, that if we have one developed. Then there's a potential that our principals can actually attach their school improvement plans to a strategic plan. Um, so that's beneficial. The other, the C E scope of work was at least six months. Um, so, uh, you know, it, it's not as a, it, I mean, it's a, probably would be a year long process versus having. A document that people weighed in on that we can actually refer back to during this year when we're making decisions.
So in the board packet, the Waitsburg one, who did that one?
That was C E.
Okay.
Um, Mary, uh, Mary didn't give us, um, she'd mentioned districts that she'd worked for. Um, but she didn't give us a work sample. And she gave us a write-up. Some of that stuff, the, the graphics and the layout of it, we can. Molly Curtis at EST one twenty-three is really great with graphic design. And so we could get something that has a fancy layout or a nice layout. Uh, things that different districts have done. Um, uh, like I'm thinking West Valley and Yakima under Mike Brophy. Um, they actually had their students design part of the graphics and the layout in their CTE classes and so. They gave them the, they gave them kind of the skeleton structure of it and they said, make this presentable so we can. Give it to the public and so we can work on how it's framed in the document, getting that document on our website. Um, and putting some neat graphics around it, but, uh, getting it in place is important.
One more real quick, I, I just happened to pull Kennewick's strategic plan for last year. Um, and it's. Three times as thorough as this one. Uh, I'd be curious if you could reach out and just ask, and I can leave it for. And add it to whatever, but.
Yeah.
Um, but it, but I thought it was pretty good. I, I don't wanna sell ourselves short again. By trying to rush, even though I think it's important, we need to get it done fast. Um. Is it worth looking at? You know, some of the, um. Oh, was it Fergus Consulting, you know, looking at some of that work, trying to just see what it looks like? Um, I see what she, their scope of work is, but I don't know what the result is.
Yeah.
Um, versus the other guy, uh, C E, you know, looking at Waitsburg and I'm not, I'm not sure who Kennewick used, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That's my two cents.
I'd like following up on that to talk to the board of those schools that have used these to see how they felt about.
That's a good idea.
Um, and I would, um, ask, recommend that the board maybe Google or Facebook search each place. Um, I don't know that. When we found that, if you do, you would think that their ideals meet the community and meet this board. And what we value in our community, um. I hate so much money, we're tight with money right now. And just travel costs per DM and to bring someone in that is not from our community and may not match or understand it. I'd hate to spend that money and then it not be a good fit and then we're out the money. For the product we don't like.
Fair enough.
Well, I agree with what Alisa just said, surprise, surprise. Um, but I do agree that it, it's a lot of money. And if we can get the value out of that, something that, that is going to, um, be beneficial. To our staff and to, uh, our community. Um, that's really what I'm looking for. It, you know, sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but. If it provides. What I'm hoping that it'll provide for information for our staff and for our students and for our community, um, then. It's money well spent, but if it's sixty thousand dollars and it, it's not giving us what we want, then. It's money wasted, so.
Okay, so, so number one, uh, Jason's concern, uh, sorry, Jan, just gonna jump off for a second. Let's find out who did the Kenwick.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and number two, which would be Alisa and Peggy. If we were to contact, uh, and have both of these. Uh, groups give us a couple districts they've worked with. We can email their board members, just like anybody can email us. And I would absolutely encourage if we get a couple, maybe a couple districts from each company. That we ourselves can jump in and find out, and their, their email should be listed somewhere. Or get some contact information from the, you know, somebody. Uh, take this upon ourselves to email and find out what they thought. And go from there. Is everybody willing to spend a couple afternoons emailing?
Get into information.
As much as I hate it, I am. So, does that sound like a plan?
Yeah.
If you could, I don't know, get us a couple contacts from, from them. And then I wanna jump on the end of this, it's not on the list. And it wasn't necessarily part of the strategic planning, but we've talked a couple times about doing some, some team building and some board workshop stuff. Uh, EST. I think it's one oh five, uh, is it one oh five? They have a guy that comes in and does it. Uh, quite reasonable considering these price tags. And then Wazda has a, a, oh, I can't think of her name. Trish LeBuck, um, and she also comes in and does it, um, little different styles. I would actually lobby to do them both. I think in the long run, over the course of the next few years, it would be money well spent for, for all of us to be able to work together and. Um, get along, have a, have a, you know, mutual goal is where we're going. If nobody's got a problem with that, uh, I will have Matt or I'll try to contact both of those people and set some times.
Yeah, I'm gonna be interested.
You okay with that, Alisa?
Are we gonna need trust falls?
I hope not.
I want some cushions on the floor.
Yeah, you can try.
We don't wanna fill out accident reports.
Okay, so we'll make sure that comes back. We'll try to get some, uh. Some stuff to present. And I, like I say, I'm, you know, the, cost-wise, they're, they're a fraction of the piece, so I think. You know, be money well spent, so. And with that, uh.
Andy, I had something real quick.
Sorry, I, I did cut off.
Michael's here, uh, and I know we're not sharing, sharing tonight, but. Um, at our Thrive meeting, they were telling me about there'll be a dance at your school Friday at lunch hour. Um, Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yeah, we're doing a whole month worth of activities, door decorating. Uh, we had an assembly plan, but the person that was gonna present wasn't available, so we're putting that to the second week of October, I believe, so.
Okay, so it won't be.
All sorts of stuff going on, and some of it's happening day by day as we're building that.
So it won't be this Friday?
The, um, the assembly that we have for this Friday has been moved.
Oh, okay.
So I'll, I'll give you updated information on that.
Cause I wanted the board aware of it. And then Brian, we were also told that there'll be. A band playing the twenty ninth at lunch here at the high school. Is that still on? I just wanted the other board members aware of these things if they wanted to attend.
They're gonna go to a middle school dance?
Oh, it's not a dance, it's a performance. Okay, and do you know Brian about that? Okay, thank you. That's what they told us. Okay. Well, they said it was a Hispanic band that was gonna perform with the students.
I was wanting to say to Mr. Danny that I had a middle school parent coming, how much she loves the communication. Online and by email from the middle school.
Hooray.
It was a tough critic.
You know, if they are gonna do something. You know, if they are gonna do something like that, Brian, you might give, uh. Well, granted, I'm trying to think of who the new principal is now. There you go. They have a really good mariachi band that goes around and plays at different places. Uh, I had a chance to watch them a couple years ago. They were, they were solid. Anything else?
Yeah, there, um, we had, no, it falls into future meetings. At our last, uh, regular board meeting. Doctor Cindy Dean had asked that we expedite, um, two of her proposals and the board was largely in agreement. It was from the Herring Center and Stepping Stones. Uh, once, one was for a speech and language pathologist, the other was for. Uh, some support for students with autism spectrum disorder. And so, uh, I was just curious if we set up a noon time meeting for the purpose of approving those, so she could. Um, start booking those, those people or, um, having students. The caseload shifted if the board would be open to that, just for either a call or zoom in. And, uh, quick approval, um, on a couple action items, if the board's open to that on Friday. If not, we can hold it over to Wednesday.
What day were you looking at?
This Friday at noon.
I'm actually off, so I could, yeah, I was gonna say they were, the one contract was like.
Really important.
A year older some.
Yeah. So, um. When we spoke with her, she had said that she would have everything ready to go. Um, for a, for a meeting, so we're operating under that assumption that. When she made that commitment, that she has those documents.
So is, is it a deal breaker if we don't get it till next Wednesday?
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, um, we, we can bring it back to the board on Wednesday. At the end of the day, what it means for us is that. Uh, if we don't comply with an I E P, we have to offer compensatory services, which is kinda like makeup services for a child. Which may like bleed into the summer months. Um, if the board's fine with that, we can do that. Um, but it's, uh, yeah, whatever you wanna do. It's a, it's kind of a, puts Selena and I under a little bit of a time crunch, cause we'd have to post by noon tomorrow.
Selena can get it.
To have it.
I have faith.
She can, she's amazing.
I also think it's a matter of keep, keeping the, the person, it's timing wise. I thought.
I'm, I'm okay with it, I'm just.
Be on this agenda, but I don't think that she was.
Do we have three of us that are available noon Friday?
I can do Friday.
And so I do believe that she does have the updated contracts, like if you want, cause she had emailed them too, we had looked at them on the side. We could email that to the entire board.
We would have to.
Um, like now, so that you have a couple of the, you know, you have to have almost.
Well, it should be.
To review it before you actually approve it Friday.
Yeah, well, if it's gonna get posted tomorrow noon, we'll be able to see them on the agenda, so.
Okay, I didn't know if you need them before then, like tomorrow.
I wouldn't. Some of us sleep, Amy.
I wouldn't know anything about that.
Yeah, I know. So we have, can you make it, Alisa? Okay, and you're, you think you can make it? Well, by golly, we'll have all five then, cause I'm off Friday and I got nowhere to be.
We'll send out a Zoom link too.
Okay.
So we can Zoom or call in and.
Be at the district office?
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna show up to physical location.
It can be in my office.
We could do it, yeah, my office is pretty tiny, so. Sweat lodge.
So if you're gonna make it down there, send them a text that you'll be there. If you're not, do a Zoom whatever and. Call in and we'll just plan on doing Friday. All right, so though that's our next meeting then technically. Our next regular meeting will be the twenty eighth, six o'clock right here. And with that.